Good morning, and welcome to Tuesday, August 8th, Board of County Commission Meeting. Today, our invocation is going to be led by our guest, Mr. Richard Harrison, and our Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Goddard. Would you please stand, Mr. Harrison? Would you come to the podium, please?
Let's pray. Father in heaven, God, we do thank you for giving us another day of life. Lord, we do thank you that your mercies are brand-new today. God, we thank you for ordaining civil government. And God, I do pray that you would bless these proceedings today. God, that you'd help this body, that you'd guide them, you'd give them your wisdom. And Lord, we do thank you again for sending your son for our salvation. We love you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioners, your first order of business is the approval of the minutes of July 5th, 2017 special meeting, July 7th special workshop, minutes of July 18th Board of County Commission workshop, minutes of July 21st BOC Hiring and Selection Committee, and the minutes of the July 25th VOCC regular meeting. We've been kind of busy, if you haven't seen that. Chair will entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second it.
Proper mo- second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our next item of business is our proclamation recognizing Mrs. J.W. Bonnie Allender for her service and dedication to the citizens of Putnam County. Thank you. As Putnam County District One County Commissioner, 1980, 1988. With the Allender family, please come forward, and Commissioner Lavelle, I'm going to ask you to read the proclamation.
Be honored to. Thank you. I was talking with the family before we got up there, and I said, "You know, it's funny. I talked to Bonnie," or Commissioner Allen, I'll call her, "many, many times, but I never met her." But she, anytime there was a challenge in the county that rose up, you were going to hear from her. I can tell you that. And she was very, very smart. Yeah, good person. With that said, I'm glad to read this into the record. Proclamation, 2017, in remembrance of J.W. Bonnie Allender. Whereas J.W. Bonnie Allender has been a resident of Fruitland area for 69 years and served as Putnam County's first female commissioner. And whereas Mrs. Allender served as District One Putnam County Commissioner from 1980 to 1988. And whereas as a civic-minded business owner, active in her community and church, Mrs. Allender was an inspiration to women throughout the county. And whereas during her tenure as county commissioner, Mrs. Allender helped oversee the building of a jail complex on Ori Griffin Boulevard, the new agricultural center in East Palaca. She also oversaw the building of the citizens' first national bank of Crescent City, where she served as a founding member on the Board of Directors. And whereas Bonnie Allender will be remembered for her astute mind, forward-thinking, and love for Putnam County. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida recognizes Mrs. J.W. Bonnie Allender for her service and dedications to the citizens of Putnam County. Done, ordered, and adopted this August 8th, 2017. And with that being read into the record, I would like to offer a motion doing the same.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lavelle.
And I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign the ayes habit. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you turn your camera?
No, I didn't.
Thank you, sir.
Can you make it zoom in?
On screen.
It's muted.
Oh, I got you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
You're okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, guys.
Before y'all sit, before y'all sit down, I would like to just make a couple of comments. Being Don- Bonnie, I grew up with Danny and Birdy, and actually Bonnie's other son, John Dale. And so I've known Bonnie all my life. And so I knew her as a, just a mother, and then as a commissioner. And then we did business together with her, she and her husband, Dan, when they had the hardware store and then furneries and other ventures that they had. I was telling Birdy and Danny this morning, when they came in, that I've been at some funerals that I was really glad that I went to. And I just want to tell you that that was a fitting tribute for such a lovely lady. The whole ceremony was, was really special, and she would have liked that. And to involve Brandy and Laura, the other granddaughter, and then John, your daughter, right? So that's a granda- a great-granddaughter. With what they said about their grandmother, it just really radiated family, and how close the family was together. And I know she'll be missed, but she'll leave a legacy for y'all to, to follow. So I just wanted to say that was very, very special service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, there's my glasses. All right. Thank you very much, the Allender family, and thank you for allowing Ms. Bonnie to serve us in Putnam County. Next, Marcia Tracy, introduction and recognition of Miss Florida Azalea and Outstanding Teens. We have a group of young ladies that look very pretty, so please come up, and why don't you introduce them, and bring them up, and let's talk about them for a moment.
We have a couple of teens this morning.
Will you pull that microphone down? There you go. I'm sorry.
We have a couple of teens that had school obligations this morning. So we have Ms. Kelsey Harrison. She is our Miss Florida Azalea. And then we have Lindsay Missionette, who is our Miss Ravine Gardens Outstanding Teen. Both of these girls went to Miss Florida, and I'm going to let them take over and just give you an idea of what they won. Both of them had great platforms, and that is what a lot of the judging is based on. It's what these girls do in their communities. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's going first?
My name is Kelsey Harrison. I am your Miss Florida Azalea. And I had the opportunity to go compete at Miss Florida, which was an amazing experience and something I get, I hope that I get to continue with. My platform was Celebration of Abilities: Changing Social Standards, and I'm an advocate for people with disabilities. I created a prom in Union County, where my hometown is. And it's an annual event where we bring the community together and try to integrate those with special needs and regular education students. While competing for Miss Florida and competing for my dream job, I had the opportunity to meet so many amazing people. I made the top 10. I was a top 10 finalist in representing your county and being able to represent my community. I won the Quality of Life Scholarship, which is for my platform. So that was amazing. That was a wonderful opportunity to be able to discuss my platform. I also won the Scholastic Ambition Scholarship from the Miss America Organization as well. And I won Community Service Scholarship from the Miss Florida Organization. So I walked away with $5,000 from this experience and scholarships, and it was an amazing experience. And I thank you for giving me this opportunity and being able to represent you this year.
Wow.
Thank you.
I'm Lindsay Missionette, and my platform is the Foster Closet. And what it is, is to help the foster families that are in need. There are roughly 250 foster kids in the system in Putnam County. And we actually, my mother-in-law got a two-year-old last night, and it's actually helped her. Because it's not that they don't come with nothing, it's they come with very little, because it's on short notice. And, and so we just go out and we help them, and we accept gently-used, brand-new stuff in it. And I went to the Miss Florida outstanding teen. I did not make top 10, and I didn't make any awards either.
We're going to have to change those judges.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Don't you come up.
You'll make us all look here, trust me. Just stand in front of us, and we'll get behind you now.
Perfect. Big smile.
Now, Commissioner Goddard wants to wear your crown.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That can be stapled on, too.
Yeah.
Well, I'm leaving the advice with everybody.
All right. Next on our agenda is Mr. David Browning, but he has not made it here yet, so we're going to skip him and come back to him. We're going to go to Cheryl Lynch, Consultant with FSBDC at UNF-SBDC Update. Now, we have a thing called CAA, Commissioners Against Acronyms, so, so please explain all the details, and I'm sure you will, Cheryl, and good to see you, sir. So, but please, you have the floor.
I'd like to introduce my area director, Kevin Monahan. So, we work as a team, so you not only have access to me, but you have access to everybody that works in the SBDC out of UNF, and I think that's about 27, about 27 folks. So, the SBDC stands for the Small Business Development Center. What do we do? We're from the government. We're here to help, right?
And you really are.
Kind of, sort of, yeah. Basically, the Small Business Development Center was started in '76 with a pilot program out of Congress to help small businesses. 1980, it was enacted. Florida was part of that initial pilot program. So we've been in existence for 40 years here in Florida. Back in 2012, folks in the community, starting with the Chamber and other local officials, decided Putnam County needs some help. Small business owners need some help. So they rallied around. We scraped all the pennies together, and we found the matching dollars to open a full-time office here in Putnam County. Program costs about...
$60,000.
For just the matching dollars. That's dollars and in-kind. The whole program in its entirety costs about $110,000. So in cash, between the county now and the city CRA of Palaca, they cover the $32,500 that's required in cash dollars. And the Chamber offers office space as in-kind contribution to the program as well. So what do I do? I help potential and existing business owners in all aspects of business management and growth. So, you need a loan? I don't have money to lend you, but I can help you through the process and put you in touch with the banks that are lending for your type of business. Need to hire folks? You don't know what to do? I can tell you the questions you're allowed to ask, you're not allowed to ask, help you through how an interview process works. You don't know how to keep your books. I happen to be a QuickBooks pro-advisor, and I'm the go-to financial person in our region, so I can help you get your books in order. Say, "Okay, great. What does that cost?" Nothing. Absolutely nothing. The business owner does not pay anything ever. Our services are provided at no cost. We also hold training programs. We try charging for those, but I do those at no cost here, too. So, we've, we've got a great resource here to help business owners. The reports that you see in front of you are the bright spots, I guess you could say, of how many coun- how many counseling sessions I've had, how many hours involved, how many people I've seen, how many jobs have been created, how many jobs have been retained, how many workshops, how much money has been infused. So, I, I said, "Okay." Been here for five years now. Let's, let's look at the big picture, because this is my first presentation to you guys. So you only have the most recent reports in front of you with a couple of success stories. But to date, we've had, and this is from about May 1st, 2012, to June 30th of 2017, had 153 jobs created, 218 jobs retained, 44 businesses started, $8,900,000 in loans obtained, total investment into the county with the loans, over $20 million. And that's all one small business at a time. So there are bright spots happening here in Putnam County. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer. Please don't ask me specifics, because all of this is held in strict confidence. There is a confidentiality agreement, because there are credit finances that are discussed with business owners, and obviously, they don't want that information disclosed, especially in a small community. So...
Cheryl, I do have a question, and I'll start it off, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Are you helping existing businesses more, or are you seeing startup businesses? Which ones are you seeing the most of right now, or have been?
It, it, it fluctuates.
Okay.
Sometimes, when I first started, it was a lot of the newer businesses, people looking to get into business, obviously, because the economy was so bad. And what happens is we have those accidental entrepreneurs, people who've lost their job, and they're not ready to retire, so they find a passion or, or a hobby, and, and those get started. Obviously, as the economy gets better, we see existing business owners, because they're having growing pains. How do they grow their sales? How do they get the funding they need to take their business to the next level?
Right.
So, it just, it varies. It just depends on the time.
I love that term accidental entrepreneur, because you pretty much are committed to that, once you become. And all of us know that up here. I mean, we've all experienced the painful ownership of owning your own business, and not being able to get paid, and taking care of your employees first, and those things. So...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
No, just looking at the pie charts, very good job there with the equality effort.
Sure.
Very good job.
Thank you. One of the things that we're very good at is, is keeping data. I mean, she'll tell you how many hours a week she also puts into the computer, making sure that the information is accurate, which goes to our main office, which goes to DC. So, we're really accountable for what we do. I also might like to add that, that Cheryl is a top-performing consultant. We have consultants in an 18-county area. Cheryl is the top-performing one of all of them, and she should be saluted for that.
Thank you.
So, we really enjoy what we do. And the thing that I say, when someone asks us what we do, I say, "We're social workers for the potentially rich."
That's a good statement right there. Hopefully...
Act Two. Two today.
I know. I know, right?
Thank you all very much for your support.
And if you've never sat down with Cheryl, let me say this about her, because I know she's brutal at times, but she's very truthful to you, and she doesn't sugarcoat the fact that it's not the easy ride that some people make it seem to be. And, you know, you've got to be in it to win it at that point. And Cheryl makes that very clear to those customers of hers, that, you know, there's going to be lots of sleepless nights going forward from this point on. So...
Yeah. One of, one of the biggest things that I hear a lot, "Well, I don't have time." Now, you're talking to somebody that owns three businesses currently and has a full-time job. Don't talk to me about time.
Right. Right.
It's your business. It's 24/7.
That's right.
Yeah. Brutally honest.
Mr. Chair, I just...
Yes, sir.
I just want to point out the fact, and thanks, Cheryl. I see you after hours at our Chamber events and spending a lot of time in Putnam County, and just don't want it to go unnoticed. Thank you for doing what you do. You do go the extra mile. That's why you won all those awards. And we're lucky to have you, and I know that. And this board should be proud of that fact. Thank you for all you do.
Just trying to pay it forward.
Thank you for your support.
Commissioner?
Well, that's what I wanted to thank you. I wasn't aware that you are out there to help small business, because I've had several businesses, and it's a stumble and fall and figure it out as you go, and the pitfalls that goes with it. So, being able to help is a, you know, it's astronomical just how, how great that is. So, thank you. And I'll get the word out to some of these small businesses, because they, even when you're running a business, sometimes it's good to kind of check with those that do this every day. I know, I've seen it many times. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I just want to thank Cheryl for the job you're doing, and meeting with you about a month ago. It was a great discussion. And I see in one of the profiles and the information you gave us, that one of the startup businesses is in Crescent City. And I have not been a good commissioner and stopped by and welcomed to town, but I will do that and, and ask them how their experience was with, with your associations. But anyway, they seem to be doing well, and I appreciate the job you're doing.
I just want to highlight one more thing before we leave. We've come to realize that finding small financing is a struggle. Anywhere between $500 or $10,000, banks are, you know, go get a credit card, ask your friends and family. So what I've done is I've reached out to business leaders in the community, retirees, things of that nature, and say, "Hey, would you be interested helping other potential small businesses in getting a leg up?" And they said, "Sure." So I've got about a dozen small business owners, and we've created the Lions Lair. Has anybody seen Shark Tank? Kind of similar thing where you'll, I'm working with potential business owners that need maybe $500, $1,000 to do a presentation to a panel to promote their business and pitch what it is that they're needing, and hopefully create some kind of alliance and working relationship where it won't be an investment, so to speak. Obviously, you're not going to $500 and take 50% of somebody's company, but it's more so like a loan-type of situation. But trying to help cross that chasm and have existing business owners, help potential business owners kind of navigate through and, and do something like that. So, the Lions Lair was created here in Putnam, and we've got two or, I think, three now that are going through the motions of getting their business plan together, working on their pitch in order to present to the panel to see if somebody would invest in their idea.
You know, Cheryl, I've told people in my life, and I own my business for 28 years, if you didn't have that lump in your throat come Friday at payroll time, you know, that's when you're truly a business owner. It's like, "Ooh, how's this going to work today?" And that's where the rubber meets the road. And you're right. Sometimes $1,000 can get you to next week where you know money's coming in. But, you know, it's embarrassing to have to ask people, "Please don't cash your check until next week." But, but the reality is, businesses are hanging on, and there's not a big profit margin like there used to be. So, we do appreciate it. I will say, on behalf of the board and our staff, anything we can do to make your life easier, or make our business owners in Putnam County's life easier, if you see a roadblock, just bring it to us, and we'll be glad to try to help you get that out of the way.
I poke.
I, I know you poke. I know you poke. But I don't mind. None of us mind. So we're here to help. Thank you very much, Mr. Monahan. Thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
See you tomorrow.
All right. All right. Our next presenter today is Mr. David Browning with Southern Strategy. If Mr. Browning, if he'll come to the podium. Mr. Browning's one of our big advocates in Tallahassee and represents us well, Putnam County, and brings home the bacon. So...
Yes, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Hi. Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank y'all very much for having me. I'm, I'm David Browning. I am a lobbyist in Tallahassee with Southern Strategy Group, and we represent Putnam County. And we've done, I think this is our third year that we've represented Putnam County. And we had, I wanted to come by and, and talk to y'all and kind of explain to you what we accomplished this session, what happened. And Commissioner Lavelle, a little bit better than our conversation a year before. And so...
It is. Much better.
And so...
That's the way it goes.
That's right. That's right. So, it's a, and for those who don't know, I'm, some of y'all I have not met yet. Commissioner Pickens, you and I have spoken on the phone, of course. And Commissioner Goddard, I don't, I have not met you formally, but I'm a, was raised in Putnam County. I was raised in East Palaca, Florida. My family is from Palaca. And went off and became a lobbyist later on, and we came back and, and was lucky enough to have Putnam County hire us as a lobbying firm. So it's not just a client for me personally. It's a, it's a real personal issue that we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to help Putnam County and see it continue to prosper and move forward. And so, so when we have not been successful, we, a year or two ago, is something we take very, very personally, and we work at it. So, this year, we were successful. And what we did is we started out, first off, by getting a good grouping of potential projects from y'all. And I think that's number one. I'd like to make that, because I think that's important, because we're coming into a legislative session next year that's going to start in January. And so we've got to go find those projects. And we had three or four that we had identified as potentials. And what we did is we kind of threw them all up against the wall, if you will, and then saw kind of what stuck, what kind of took or, or stuck there, and then worked on them. And worked very, very closely with Representative Payne. I can tell you that having him there has been an incredible asset for us. It's, it's really nice to have somebody who's a Palaca person representing Putnam County. And that has made a world of a difference in the House in helping us there. And so he hit the ground running. We worked, almost, I would say, every day we were talking to him on different projects and so forth. We, we went after the Dog Branch Creek project, and the reason that that one was really important, I think, was because we started it. Remember, two years ago, we went and got all the engineering and everything done. And then last year, we did not get the fully funding on it. And this year, we were able to fully fund it. And so that's a project that we will be able to complete, I believe, with the efforts of what we've been able to achieve in Tallahassee. And I thought that was an important thing to do. Also, the dollar amounts on it, it was over $1 million, was a good number. You know what I mean? And so getting that, to me, was, got us a, a single or a double, if you will. Another project that we went after was the fire station. That was a project that was funded at the last minute in the Senate, the last minute. What we call is the Senate bought it, if you will. They took it out of their bill, or their, their allocation of dollars, and they placed it down, and, and they did it. And so that one took the, till the end of session for us to get that done. But we had it in play the whole time. We did not end up getting the animal shelter. But the reason for that was, because it was $400,000. We would have rather, which we did, go get $2.3 million for the community, and then take the animal shelter, move it to next year. If, if we could get it, we would have added on, on the back end, if you will. But, but we really wanted to hit a couple of, of, of good projects back to the community. Senator Keith Perry has been great to work with, really, really helps and advocates for our community. And so we had a great session. And I think we'll have another good session. I think that one thing we've got to do is we've got to find those projects again. So if it's okay, we'd like to work with y'all and try to identify four or five different projects, we can prioritize them, and so forth. And we're going to have to do things earlier, because we'll start committee weeks starting in September. So we're only a month away of starting committee weeks, and we'll go into session in January. And so we, we've got to kind of get on it and educate people, and continue to work with both Senator Perry and Representative Payne, and kind of give them the tools that they need to be successful and help us. And so, so I kind of report that it was a good year. And, you know, we look forward to continuing doing it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lavelle.
I just wanted to personally thank you and publicly thank you, David. The, the fire station is as important as water and sewer in East Palaca and its development. Without it, it's one of the key ingredients. We have to have it. And you can see what's happening in East Palaca. It's transforming right in front of our eyes. And soon, I'm sure there'll be some residential development. But most of all, you know, I'm really on this animal shelter and its facilities and getting a new one for the county. And thank you so much. I know you tried, and Representative Payne and Keith, all of you really tried to get this. And there'll be needs, you know, thank God, the, the taxpayers of this county were bold enough with the Better Place Plan, were able to apply those kind of funds through these capital expenditures, and we're going to be able to move that forward. But we'll need help in the next session, so if you can please, well, you'll get it from us again, but we can still use help. And it looks like the next session and the time of construction is probably going to be, come together, time-wise, anyway, in time that maybe we can get something this next session. But thank you very much for all you did. It's more than's ever been done before. And we really, we, and Dog Branch, of course, you know, it's not a glorious project, but it needs to be done. Thank you.
That's right. Well, I'll tell you, we, we really enjoy representing Putnam County. And I think we can absolutely have great success for Putnam County. Really, I mean, we, and I keep saying this, that having Bobby and having Representative Payne, having Senator Perry there, and them coming in really at the same time. So we have eight years, hopefully, of them. And I think it's an incredible benefit for this community.
Really is.
Thank you.
You're right. Commissioners, any other comments or questions?
Appreciate it.
Just thank you for what you've done. And I had lunch with Representative Payne not long ago, and he definitely commented you on getting things done in Tallahassee. So I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. And if y'all ever need me, I'm available. You can reach me at any time, and I'll make sure you...
Time wise, anyway, in time that maybe we can get something this next session. But thank you very much for all you did, it's more than's ever been done before. And we really, and Dog Branch, of course, you know, it's not a glorious project, but it needs to be done.
That's right. Well, I'll tell you, we, we really enjoy representing Putnam County. And I think we can absolutely have great success for Putnam County. Really, I mean, we, and I keep saying this, that having Bobby and having Representative Payne, having Senator Perry there and them coming in really at the same time, so we have eight years, hopefully, of them. And I think it's an incredible benefit for this community.
Really is.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments or questions?
Appreciate it.
Just thank you for what you've done. And I had lunch with Representative Payne not long ago and he definitely commented you on getting things done in Tallahassee, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much. And if y'all ever need me, I'm available, you can reach me at any time and I'll make sure you have my cell numbers or whatever and answer any questions. But we'd like to start working on that project list, if you will, of potential projects and get to work and turn around and do it again.
They're going, I believe Representative Payne, Ms. Wilkinson's going to speak in a few minutes and we can ask her. But there's a date coming up with a town hall meeting here about our priorities and things coming up with Senator Perry. So we'll be able to hone that down and put you back out there to work and get, get things going. I tell you, the East Palaca Fire Department thing, that's really going to help that whole area, all the way down to Federal Point. And Chief Romei and I and our administrator sat down the other day and there's a lot of latitude that we can do with that. And he's out working very hard right now to make sure that that gets done for that area. So we do appreciate all you do and look forward to next session and anything we can do to help you, we're all just one phone call away.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you, David.
Thank you for coming down, sir, thank you. All right, next, Ms. Leota Wilkinson, Executive Secretary to Representative Bobby Payne, District Nineteen. Discussion on the upcoming food distribution project. Ms. Leota Wilkinson, you have the floor, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So thank you, David Browning, for that presentation and we enjoy and glad we have that partnership with their company. And I agree that moving Putnam County forward is important and having that relationship with them, so thank you for that. This morning, just for those who don't know me and for our listening audience, my name's Leota Wilkinson and I'm the Executive Director to your State Representative Bobby Payne. I'm here to announce an upcoming community event being held this Saturday, August twelfth, from nine to noon at the Putnam County Courthouse parking lot. We are super excited about this. Our office, along with Senator Perry, has teamed up with Farm Share to provide a free food distribution to our community. To tell you a little bit about Farm Share, they have a public partner, public-private partnership with the Florida Department of Agriculture and the Florida Department of Corrections. Farm Share uses volunteers and inmate labor to resort and package surplus produce and distribute it to communities throughout the state. Florida Farm Share receives surplus produce from farmers and distributes more than fifteen million pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables to participating communities each year. Last year, Farm Share served more than four million Florida households and distributed more than thirty-three million pounds of food to people in need. Representative Payne, Senator Perry, the Palaca Sunrise Rotary, the Palaca Police Department, the Police Athletic League and the Putnam County Sheriff's Office have joined together with Farm Share to give away fresh produce and groceries at the Putnam County Courthouse in Palaca on this Saturday from nine to noon. Farm Share will provide a huge semi-load full of food, we're super excited about that, with volunteers handing out bags of groceries to our families in the community. This is a non-political, nonpartisan community event. Anyone can get food, there are not any requirements, there's no income requirements. Farm Share is an equal opportunity provider. So if you need, if anybody in the community needs food or knows of someone who does, please stop by this Saturday from nine to noon. And we're just asking for help in spreading the word so that we can have a good turnout. And we're just looking forward to this great event in our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
This is a great project and we really appreciate it. I'm sure that y'all have done all the radio stations.
We have, we've done all the radios. I've left some flyers right here on the corner, so if anybody wants to take those and help us spread the word, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Leota, thank you for all you do and please tell Representative Payne how much we appreciate what he's doing for Putnam County also.
Absolutely. And you mentioned, it's not, it's not the town hall meeting, but the Putnam County delegation meeting.
Delegation meeting.
Yes, and that is on Monday, September twenty-fifth, from two to four in this chamber.
Good deal.
And we welcome the public.
Everybody's welcome to give up what they needed for Putnam County.
That's right.
That's right.
And we're hoping for a very successful legislative year.
We are too.
We are too, that's right.
Thank you again and we look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Okay.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, good deal. All right, now that takes us to our public comment portion of our meeting. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters unless the board has received no prior information as part of this agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We're not going to pull you off if you go over, but we're going to try to ask you to stay on task. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the meeting room at the back and they're blue and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the deputy clerk who sits to the right of the podium. Again, if you need, let me say this, if you have an item that requires more time, then it can be agendaed. So just remember that. And we try not to have any personal attacks here. So we're not going to tolerate personal attacks on commissioners or on our residents. Our first person today on my card is Mr. Kevin Perry. Mr. Perry, would you make your way to the microphone, please, sir? Now, your card lists some people's names, I would prefer you not to use their name. I would prefer you just to state your situation and go from there. Because I don't want personal attacks based out there in our listening audience to hurt people, okay?
Good morning, commissioners. I've actually spoken to Commissioner Larry Harvey on this issue before. I'm homeowner in Interlochen at two thirteen O'Farrell Avenue. Unbeknownst to me, when we bought the property and Commissioner Harvey actually was the insurance agent for our old owner, was an absentee owner from New York. So the property that I bought was pretty much a snowbird home for the owner. Had it maybe, came down to Putnam County maybe once a month per year. I have spoke with the owner, we closed electronically, but I spoke with the owner. We've owned the property for a year and done a lot of rework of the property and still are, it's work in progress. The homeowner next to me, that property has been condemned since two thousand and nine. Since two thousand and nine, it has been condemned. Actually, I came aboard to the meeting on seven twenty, right here in this office, with a special magistrate, John McPherson, which ruled for foreclosure of that property. Meaning it, it's gone that far. I've got all the paperwork, Commissioner Harvey has seen that paperwork as well. Commissioner Harvey actually has known these folks, I guess, because when I spoke with him over the phone originally, from the first time that he has known these folks, I guess, all his adult life and even through school. Not only have I had issues with the property values going to almost zero, if anybody has ever actually seen this property next to us, it is a disgrace. We are the type of people that would absolutely help these people. However, these people have actually, and have for the last nine years continually, trespassed the property, damaged my property. I see that we have a couple sheriff's offices here. I have the sheriff's office out at our property for legal issues probably about four times per month. This month alone, I've had three hundred and fifty dollars in window damage. Leave the property, they break windows. The biggest issue is though, it is a safety issue, being that this property, and it is clearly, clearly out there since two thousand and nine, at sixty-nine thousand dollars in fines and counting. Again, I need some help with this, folks. I don't have anywhere else that I can actually put my money in right now. We're actually rebuilding the property, but it is a, for the whole street, it is a nuisance. It is a safety issue, so I need some help.
Mr. Perry, with the public, what you didn't say is you have met with Mr. Hammond and myself.
Yes, sir.
Met with staff with Code's Enforcement and they are working on this situation. I can honestly tell you, Sunday at church, they are looking, the people next door to you are looking for solutions to that problem. And they are either trying to, they want to clean it up or they want to move, but they want to do both. And one of the others is going to happen. So just stay with Mr. Hammond on this issue and we will keep you informed of what's going on, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, and I appreciate your understanding, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas Hayes? Mr. Hayes? Mr. Hayes? We have a meeting to continue, sir.
Thank you for allowing me and my two bests to come to your meeting. I, I'm here primarily so I can get you all at once because of the Florida sunshine law. My concern is the pay scale that you want to give to the new county administrator. There is, turns out, there is a formula that we might be able to use. It's primarily geared towards elected officials, but, and there's also Florida statute for county employees. And so from my calculations, the most that we should pay the county administrator would be approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Now, according to Indeed dot com, a county administrator or an administrator, whether it's corporate or government in the state of Florida.
Mr. Hayes, your dogs are.
Roughly sixty-eight thousand dollars. According to Indeed dot com, the administrator in Miami-Dade is making ninety thousand. So anyway, I just wanted to point those figures out, I'm more than happy to give you the information with the Florida statutes.
Please give that to Tony, our clerk, and we appreciate your comments on that.
And then the second thing is in regards to the healthcare plan that you're going to provide for your employees. I know that you guys have considered some other options. If you were to research, it would be, there's what's called the Florida Partnership Program, which is a long-term care program, that, to be able to incorporate that, so that way if somebody has, needs long-term care, that there would be some coverage. Also look at an outfit called Atlas M.D.s. It's a concierge cooperative system where a, an adult pays fifty dollars a month and a child is ten dollars a month and they have doctors that they go to, because maybe that would lower the cost. And then the Cato Institute published a book. Hush, hush, sorry about that. He's only eighteen months and he's in training. Anyway.
I'd call him down, but I don't think he'd respond to me, sir.
Yes. Anyway, the, it's called Patient Powers. And it's a book by the Cato Institute and I do believe that has to do with the healthcare savings accounts and cooperative systems.
Thank you. If you'll give that to Tony, our clerk, and you dropped a piece of paper behind you, Mr. Hayes. Thank you for your comments and we appreciate your time today, sir.
And thank you for allowing, like I said, me and the critters. As you know, the Pandora's been trained well, he's the one that's still learning.
Leaving you now, so, yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hayes, we appreciate that. Is there anybody else in the public wishing to speak to us right now? Public comment time? All right, hearing none, we're going to close our section of public comment and go to our consent agenda. I've already closed the public comment.
I have nothing this morning and I congratulate staff on the small consent agenda. This is the least amount of items I've ever seen and I like it.
Good deal. Okay, Commissioner Goddard, you have any items you want to pull?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
All right. And I have one that I just want to say, and we don't have to go into, into depth on it. Item E in Commissioner Goddard's district, Lake Susan Road, is, is going to start getting some design consulting work, boring samples, I read, things are happening and we're impressed. I want to congratulate you on getting these projects that have been sitting there in the vault for a long time out and start moving them forward. You know, that's economic development for Putnam County, infrastructure and roads. So we greatly appreciate that. So with that, I will end my comments and the chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, and E.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay. Your next item of business is item ten, Code's Enforcement, page one oh four on your packet. Mr. Salmon, you have the floor, sir. Give me just a moment to get to one oh four, if you don't mind.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I might, before we get started, these next two items, let's see, R seventeen dash oh oh four and R seventeen dash oh oh five are quasi-judicial in nature. So I'm going to ask each one of you to please disclose any ex parte communications. And when you're done with that, we're going to go ahead and have, have Tony swear everybody in that's, that's going to be speaking today on those two matters.
Yeah, and that's a really good move, because it really, on a quasi-judicial, we need everybody to swear their testimony in. And so, and that's when we're going to take public comments on the items that if, if it's there, we'll take public comments at that public meeting. Mr. Salmon, you have the floor, sir, on this item.
Hey, this is case two thousand eight zero zero four three four nine, one twenty, excuse me, one twenty-nine John Street, Hawthorne. Boston Nation for Wells Fargo Bank, they're asking for a fine reduction. The type of violation is unpermitted addition.
Before we continue, please. Before we continue onto these, we need the ex parte's disclosed and then.
Not yet.
Not yet, not on this one.
This is a code enforcement thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
Yeah, you're ahead of the game.
Sorry.
That doesn't happen until ten, sir. Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. The length of time to achieve compliance was eight years, six months. The bank has offered ten thousand dollars to settle this case and have the county release the lien. We have one daily fine lien. Bank foreclosed on the property, staff is recommending that the board accept the ten thousand dollar offer that's paid within thirty days of the release of lien.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Salmon on this? All right, board, what's your pleasure?
I move that we accept the fine as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard to go with staff recommendation.
I'll second it for conversation, but do we have anybody from the public representing this property?
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Lible. Any further discussion on this item?
They are out of town, they didn't indicate to me that they would be here. We've been communicating by email.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. We're going to stand adjourned till our ten o'clock certain meeting, so.
Recession. Recession.
Going to, if everybody get their seats, please. All right. We're going to reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting for Tuesday, August eighth. At time certain is ten o'clock. And our first order of business is our Planning and Development Public Hearing on item A, R seventeen zero zero four, approval for zoning map amendment, commercial retail to commercial general. You have the floor, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Harvey, the board.
Right, I'm going to have to do it again.
Yes, this is quasi-judicial. So we need to reveal any, before you get started, we need to reveal any communications we've had with the applicant or anybody.
Or staff, any, yeah.
Yeah.
With the parties.
Any parties. Commissioner Lible?
I've had none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I just spoke to staff.
I did speak to staff yesterday, I think the wrong map was included in our packet, just to get the right map. But other than that, that's the only thing I did.
And then, next step, before we get started, we'll have, we'll have Tony swear in, anybody that, that's going to speak on these two matters?
Okay. Is anybody here going to speak on this item?
This one and the next one?
Okay. Well, why don't you come and get sworn in before we get started on that?
They can do it in place, they can just rise and raise their right hand.
Okay. Good deal. Okay. You're sworn in to get sworn out, that's what happens in our business.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, sir, go right ahead. Thank you very much. All right, sir, go right ahead with your presentation.
Chairman Harvey, and if it pleases the Board, today I'm presenting a simple rezoning request from commercial two to commercial three. This presentation will include 12 more slides where we review the criteria for a rezoning request. The applicant and owner is Capital City Bank. As we've stated, the request is a zoning map amendment from commercial retail to commercial general on two adjacent parcels totaling 0.48 acres. The purpose of the proposed rezoning is to conform to the C3 zoning requirements under the Land Development Code. The location, the 911 address, is 305 South Highway 17 in East Palatka, Florida. There's an aerial map of the subject site. Two parcels are outlined in blue. The current future land use designation is commercial. As you can see along this corridor, you have heavy commercial use. The current zoning is C2. And the proposed zoning would be C3 if we adopt today. Just real quick, we're going to go over some comprehensive plan consistency requirements. Because the future land use on this parcel is already commercial, it's already consistent with the future land use designation. The proposed general, commercial zoning would be consistent with the comp plan. C3 is our general zoning district, so you have a mixture of light and medium intensity commercial. Requires immediate access to major and minor arterial roadways, and the future land use category is commercial. Brief analysis, stated before, C3 zoning district is consistent with the commercial future land use designation. These parcels have direct access to Highway 17. Traffic will not pass through established neighborhoods. And according to the traffic circulation element of the comp plan, this Highway 17 has a level of service of D, which is acceptable. Neither parcel's in the floodplain nor do they contain wetlands. Parcels are appropriate commercial infill locations. Proposed use will be located on sites that have direct access to paved roadways and a collector or higher roadway functional classification. The site's accessible to intended markets or service areas and do not require significant non-residential vehicle traffic to pass through established neighborhoods. And the types of commercial uses and site development standards are subject to further regulation by commercial zoning district standards provided in the Land Development Code. Findings and recommendations, staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with locational requirements for C3 zoning, and compatible with the zoning uses. Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously of the rezoning at a July 12, 2017 meeting. Staff therefore recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from C2 to C3. Any questions for staff?
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right, hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this petition? All right, anybody, Mr. Key, you want to speak? You've been sworn in duly, so please come up and share.
Thank you, Commissioners. John Key, 415 St. John's Avenue, Palatka. I'm here representing Capital City Bank, who is the current parcel owner. They would like to have this rezoning change from C2 to C3, so that it may help them in selling this parcel.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience would like to speak in favor? All right, seeing none, anybody would like to speak against this petition? All right, that will end our public hearing on this item. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve staff recommendation.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens to approve-
Second.
Staff recommendation. Proper second by Commissioner Lible. Is that correct? Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you. The ayes have it, and the petition has moved forward. Thank you, Mr. Key. We appreciate it. Next item on your agenda is item B, R-17-005. Request Board accept planning commission and staff recommendation to rezone 316-18 State Road 26, Melrose Kathleen Ashley from R1A to C3. I will start with quasi-judicial. I have had conversations with Judy McLacklin about this item. And I know Ms. Massey left me a voicemail last night on my county phone concerning this matter also. Mr. Lible?
I've had contact with Mr. J.J. Tilton in support of this project, and that's it.
Okay, Mr.-
I've had none.
Spoke to staff.
Okay, all right. All right, those of you who want to speak on, on this item, please rise, and we'll swear you in. Okay? All right. Tony?
I do.
Good, thank you very much. Okay, sir. Mr. Simmons, you have the floor, sir.
This is a request to rezone the property at 316-318 State Road 26 in Melrose from R1A to C3. The property in question is right on State Road 26. The future land use category of the property is commercial. It's a 1.62 acre parcel located right across from the Blue Water Bay. The R1A zoning district that it is now is not an appropriate zoning district for a commercial land use. The surrounding properties are C2 for the most part. The proposed zoning would make it C3. There's a property kind of diagonally across the street that's also zoned C3. As you're aware, C3 is the new, is the new C2. C2 used to be a general commercial district back under the old zoning ordinance. And even in the Land Development Code for a while, now it's been changed to be light industrial and C2. And the, the C3 zoning is now the general zoning district. Now, last property, there's a historic district. It's not in the historic district. It's separated from the historic district by a lot or two. I could go through the staff report. You have prepared to do that, but it's a pretty consistent rezoning. It's changing a zoning that's not proper to a proper zoning. There was one person at the planning commission that requested that the planning commission recommend C2 rather than C3. The planning commission did not do that. They voted 6-0 to rezone the property to C3. I'm willing to answer any question you have, or I can go through the whole staff report if you'd like.
Okay, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I don't have any questions on this one.
I have, I have none.
You did say this was a few blocks from the historic district?
It's a few lots.
Few lots.
Right.
Mr. Simmons, could you address, and maybe Mr. Brown, you've been duly sworn in? There is a historic district out there, and it would probably behoove us to go ahead and talk about that while we're here today. Because it doesn't encompass the whole Melrose community out there. And it's been a defined area for quite some time now. So would you like to do that, or would you like for Mr. Brown to?
The historic district is showing on the map right now is in the greens.
Our maps aren't working up here. Our monitors aren't.
Your monitors aren't on?
No, sir.
Mr. Simmons, before you get started too much, this is the recently created overlay. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, sure.
And the lot in between the proper, the proposed zoning and the historic district is, there's, they have a protective layer of a lot or two around it. In the, in this particular instance, it's, it's the lot right next to it that's the protective layer. So that's generally, the mic, if you want to add anything, or you can.
I know, Mr. Brown, you've worked on this with me out there quite a bit on this historic area, so why don't you weigh in on the conversation, please?
Okay, sure. As you were aware, the Board of, back in, I think it was '08, actually, the county approved a historic district for the Melrose area. And as the Commissioner, as the Chairman pointed out briefly, it did not encompass the entire Melrose proper area. When the county adopted that historic district, they also adopted a buffer zone around the district. And pursuant to the comp plan, anything that happens, any changes to rezoning or land uses or other development activities that happens within even the buffer zones, staff takes a look at it as potential adverse impacts to the historic district. And more recently, just giving you a brief history of the historic district, the Board did approve a committee, a historic district committee, as set forth in the Land Development Code, and to guide the historic preservation within the historic district. This parcel that's in question falls even outside of the buffer area. I mean, there is one, there's one lot or one parcel between this parcel and the beginning of the buffer area. So it's, and it's even more separated than, also from the actual historic district boundaries. If there's any more questions regarding that, I can, I'm not sure what you were looking for.
No, you, you did right. You did fine. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Brown? Okay. Hearing none, I do have two blue cards in front of me. So, but let me ask this first. Is there anyone here that's been sworn in and would like to speak in favor of this application? Okay, please come up. We need to swear you in. Did you stand up and get sworn in?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, please come up. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Diana-
Bring that microphone down to you. There you go.
Hi, my name's Diana Vogel, and I spoke at the Plan Board. I'm the broker for the buyer. And this property is currently not zoned. And because it, actually, you all changed the comprehensive plan several years ago while the lady that used to own it prior to her death. And so now, we were advised that there is no zoning. It needs to be made, the reason we're here is because you all mandated that we pay a fee to have it be compatible with your future comprehensive plan. So, we're just being in compliance, and it was recommended by staff that it be C3 general zoning. So, and that allows, in case, the only difference between C2 and C3, it was my understanding, is to allow you to have mini storage. And it does have two driveway aprons already, so there's no, you know, for access to the property from State Road 26. And there is a laundromat that fronts State Road 26 to the east, and a Dollar General on the, on the northeast side of the property, and a funeral home on the, on the other side, on the west. And we're about two blocks down from the historic district.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vogel. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Manning, we're not really allowed to ask what the property is going to be used for. It just has to follow in. But you mentioned it, and then wait- I, I understand that. I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, you can certainly ask, but really, the focus of your decision is merely within the four corners of whether they meet the conditions that, that give them an entitlement to have the rezoning.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application? All right. Now, I'm assuming these are against, so we'll move to the against. Ms. Deborah Massey, if you'll come forward, please?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Massey. I live, I have property, two properties in Putnam County, 115 and 119 Second Street. And I am Vice President of the NBCA for quite a few years now. And I just wanted to let you know that I've spoken with quite a few of our lovely Melrose people, and we are opposed to the rezoning of C3. Most of the businesses are C2. And, you know, that's, we, we know that we need to grow, but we just, there's so much traffic right now anyway, where 26 and 21 come into play. I just can't see another huge amount of trucks going that way. We were, there was a lot of us opposed to the Dollar General when it came in as well. And we thank Putnam County for letting us know how to get our ducks in a row so you all could recognize us, for us to have a voice. And I'm speaking for a lot of Melrose, saying, here's our voice, and we are opposed to the rezoning of the highest zone. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Massey. Any questions for Ms. Massey? All right, our next speaker, Mr. Joseph Rush. And the NBCA is the Melrose Business Community Association. We're trying to spell out our acronyms around here.
Hello, yes, hello, I'm Joseph Rush, and I spelled it out on my form, the Melrose Business and Community Association. I'm the President of the Melrose Business Community Association. I've also been extremely active in the improvements going on at Heritage Park. We just got our new permanent bathroom put in, so we got rid of our port-alets that were out there. Anyway, there are many of us working in many ways to improve Melrose. We put in a new parking lot at our beach park that we keep open for the public there, a very wonderful part of Melrose. I've grown up in St. Petersburg, but I moved up to Gainesville in 1973 and started coming out to Palatka in 1974. So I've been keeping an eye on this area for quite a while. I am personally not opposed to changing it from R1 to commercial, but I believe C2 is the right designation for this and not C3. I would like to clarify some things on the map. I'm glad that's still up there. I believe it is just one lot away from the historic district, and that is an empty lot. The property next door to it is what used to be a funeral home, but is no longer, and we're considering making it into a bed and breakfast. And the empty lot next door would just, it's been marketed as being a great place for the parking lot for the historic districts, hopefully soon to be bed and breakfast. The only other place on the map that is C3 is mostly an empty lot that is next door to Blue Water Bay and is used as a parking lot for the C2 business of Blue Water Bay. So every business that is currently there is C2. I think the appropriate designation for this is also C2. I would like to state that I did not oppose the Dollar General. I think you need some development, and what you need is appropriate development. The Dollar General and the Family Dollar on Highway 21, it's sort of the commercial district of Melrose, if I may be so bold to use that term for a small sleepy town like Melrose. But there are a number of businesses, the Ace Hardware, the grocery store, Kangaroo Gas Station, and so on. The Highway 26 is much more the historic district. There are other historic areas like Chappini's Gas Station, very famous place, that is not actually on the historic register at this point in time, but is a historic. So, I think C2 is perfectly appropriate. By matter of fact, I've worked a lot with the Alachua County, County Commission and on the rezoning and getting rid of the patchwork quilt and making the lots along the major arteries, 26 and 21, to be commercial. And the residential area is back off the road. So I believe commercial is the right zoning, but C2, there are no other C3 businesses on here. One lot that is zoned C3, but it's currently a parking lot. Thank you very much for the consideration. I hope that you will approve a C2 designation for this lot. That is what everything else in the area is. And I'd like to clarify, because I believe the statement was that it was two blocks from, by the Speaker, not by your staff. The staff said that it was just a couple lots. I think it's one lot, and I believe that's an empty lot next to what used to be the funeral home.
I think I heard the one lot is what I heard, and that's what y'all referred to.
One empty lot.
Yeah. So, thank you, Dr. Rush. We appreciate-
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Rush while he's here? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else would like to speak? And, hang on, we're, we're in opposition right now against it, so please come up. You're in opposition of the zoning from-
Zoning change to C3, yes.
Yes, then it's your turn to speak.
Okay.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Linda Kemp. I live at 103 Grove Street in Melrose. I happen to be the president of the Melrose Historic District Committee. I am here tonight speaking as a citizen. And you may recall that I was involved quite a bit with a lot of people in Melrose with the Dollar General opposition. I realized that the commercial district there, they fit all of the requirements and that eventually they were going to be approved, and they were. But on State Road 26, it's a different story. State Road 26 is also known as Bellamy Road. It's a historic road. It, it goes all the way to Tallahassee. The thing our committee is most involved with is historic preservation of the town. And if you drive down 26, you'll see many, many Victorian homes and homes on the register. And we are, we are continuing to add homes to the Putnam County Register that aren't on there yet, but it's the historic nature of Melrose that makes it different from other small towns. And I would not want to see another Dollar General type of store on this lot, because if you give it a C3, that's what would be allowed there, another garish, yellow and black business, which does not fit in with the historic character of State Road 26. It just doesn't. And Mr. Rush was correct. There's this property, and then there is a small lot between this property and the Rosewood Cottage. The small buffer piece of property actually looks like it's part of the Rosewood Cottage. There's no fence or anything there but a couple of rocks. It seems like it's only around 50 feet wide, and that is the buffer zone. So this piece of property is very close to all of the historic buildings in this area. And I also think C2 would probably be more appropriate. I would rather see C1, but I don't see the planning board putting a C1 on anything out there. So I think C2 would be the next designation that would fit, because, you know, it seems to me like if you have C1, C2, C3, and going up, like C1 would be the least. And you want to just go from residential to C3. I mean, it, you're making a big leap by doing that, and it just isn't appropriate. I want to kind of keep an eye out, because I see there's a slow erosion of the historic character. If we let this happen lot by lot, they're, you know, they are bumped up for more commercial, more commercial, and before you know it, the historic nature is gone. So I hope you will consider changing the zoning to a C2, not a C3. Be more appropriate. That's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp. I do want to say that we're protecting the historical area. I know that there is other areas, there's other buildings that are, have history. But the definition of the historic area that you're in charge of has been defined and has been maintained, and this is not in there. Now, if the town, if Melrose was an incorporated town, they could do what they want. And we've had that discussion many, many, many times. But they could do what they wanted to do at that point. But, you know, there is a defined boundary that we are protecting as a board, and you're protecting as a group of citizens also.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laibley.
Mrs. Kemp, kind of on the same lines, when you did your overlay, which was a very multi-month process, how come this property was left out?
It's not, it's not on the historic register. This property is not. But it's next to, except for this like 50-foot swath of a lot, which I didn't even realize wasn't part of Rosewood Cottage, because Rosewood Cottage, which it used to be the funeral home, has a big grassy green lawn, and that lawn goes all the way up to this property that we're talking about, that wants the zoning change. You can't tell there's a lot between the two. It's just a grassy area. But it, this piece of property does hit the historic, the buffer zone, which is that 50-foot lot. And it looks like it's part of the Rosewood Cottage, you know. If you go and look at it, you'll see. So.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown, along those lines, can I ask you a question concerning, there was, the historic area could not be enlarged. Is that correct? It was, it was defined?
It, it wasn't enlarged. It could be by the action of the board.
Right.
An amendment to the comp plan. But to date, there's been no request, either from the public or I haven't heard anything from the board, a desire to expand it. So that what's, what's in place today was what was adopted back in '08, I believe, that the county adopted that, that historic district. So it stayed the same.
Yes, Commissioner Laibley.
If I could, Mr. Brown, on the rest of the properties on Highway 26 from the intersection of 21 going west towards Gainesville, are they on the future land, land use map, zone C3?
They, future land use map and zoning. You're asking two parts in that question. They are all on the future land use map, commercial. The zoning for, and I believe John has a map on here. This is the proposal. The zoning is C2 for all of those, except for one parcel that's further west, that although it's designated commercial on the land use, it is also zoned R1A. I mean, as I've pointed out, I think, a number of times, and as you're aware, Commissioner, the county, back in the early 90s, when they adopted the comp plan, didn't do a real good job of then following up and rezoning the properties to match up throughout the county, to match up with what they had designated the land uses at. And Putnam County's not unique in that. Every county and municipality, pretty much in the state, didn't follow through comprehensively to a, to change the zoning. In this case, you have C2 zoning for, except for one parcel. This parcel was also left as R1A. And we've seen requests come in, and the Dollar General was one, where it was also R1A, but the land use was designated commercial. So, but presently, except for that one parcel that's sort of diagonal across 26, all of those properties are C2 rather than C3. And one of the reasons that, you've seen that, and it's been pointed out, is the county went through last year, or earlier this year, I can't remember now, upgraded our Land Development Code and basically made C3 our general commercial zoning category, where it used to be C2.
And with that being said, if an entity went to this property, and it was zoned C2, they cannot achieve 3 through special use permit?
Right, right. We cleaned a lot of that up, because we've again, a lot of special use permits, and we figured.
So what we do today is pretty much in stone.
Yes, and just to point, point out, there was a statement, Linda made a statement about, you know, the Dollar General. Dollar General would be allowed in C2, so this, you know, that this, that wouldn't, changing the C2, C3 for this parcel doesn't forego the possibility of a Dollar General, that, you know, just pointing out that example. But we've, I'm reiterating things I've already said, but, you know, when we made that, staff recommended a change to the Land Development Code to upgrade and move C2 to, the, make C3 our general commercial. That's why we're seeing a lot of these changes, and you've, you've seen them come up recently in various parts of the county.
I see. Then I had a question for Mrs. Massey, if I could.
Sure, please. Ms. Ma, come up to the podium.
Just to get my bearings right, is this Red Thompson's? Are you an heir of Red Thompson's? Or, no, I'm sorry. No, who was?
Oh, I'm Diana Vogel.
Diana, I'm sorry, yes, I'm reading my notes. Diane, are you a heir? Was this, I'm trying to figure out.
Please come to the podium. Please come. Ms. Vogel, thank you.
You said this property is right across from Blue Water Bay.
Right, exactly across. And I'm the, I'm the broker for the buyer.
I got it, never mind.
And however, the person that inherited it, it was her grandmother's property. But you all had apparently changed it back years ago to seed, to commercial. But when she died, it wasn't grandfathered in.
It was a residence.
Right. It's two residents. And, and they're dilapidated. But they are, and, and my client is planning to fix it up. He's not planning to put a Dollar General. But it was my understanding that when we came in, we had it as C2. However, your staff said we should make it C3, because the old, if you look at the, next to the last page of the packet, the future land use map, it's all red, that whole block there.
Well, Ms. Vogel, yeah, the C3 is now the C2.
Exactly. And so we were advised to change it to C3, to make it general, so that he would have the ability, without having to come back and get a special use permit for anything he wanted to do. It was that, that was my understanding, so.
That's, you got me clear. Thank you very much.
And you brought up a name from a long time ago.
Yeah, exactly.
I remember Mr. Red Thompson. All right. Anybody else in the audience that has been sworn in that would like to speak in opposition? Please come up to the podium, and we will swear you in, sir. Tony?
Please state your name for the record. Please state your name for the record.
John McCray.
Do you swear? Our testimony and evidence you're providing is a truth of justice. I'm just happy to.
I do. My name's John McCray. I live at 405 Pearl Street. We finally call it the Pearl River when we have a storm come through. And I'm not opposed to, obviously not opposed to any development, as long as it's a limited development. My family are pioneers here since the 1840s. They were all entrepreneurs, doctors, lawyers, business store owners. And, but we have a severe drainage problem in Melrose. And adding any more pavement anywhere that drains out into State Road 26 is going to compound the issue. I have some videos when we had the storm came through. We had like four and a half inches in less than two hours one day. And the water was actually coming up out of the ditch along by the school, which is the headwaters of Etna Creek, exactly, almost coming up to Blanding. My neighbor, on the bottom, on the downside of Pearl Street, they're in, almost 90 years old, both of them. And I had to go over and dam their front door up, keep water from rushing in. And, I mean, paving any more land over there that dumps water into State Road 26 that eventually gets in to the Etna Creek area is just going to compound the flood issue. I've had to ditch along with my tractor alongside Pearl Street to move the water out and did the same thing for my neighbor to keep him getting in their house. But like I say, I'm not opposed to, you know, businesses coming in. I like to stay away from C3, but there's, needs to be something done about the flooding issue we have over there. And I have videos and pictures available, if anybody'd like to see them, of how bad it is.
Thank you.
If I could.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, can we call Mr. Brown, or Mr. Sam, as to speak to the impervious surface?
Yeah, any significant changes in the development on that property will have to go to the Development Review Committee, and drainage will certainly be addressed. State One, St. John's Water Management and Public Works are both involved in that thing, and they would be both looking at drainage.
And it would have to be kept on the property. It wouldn't be able to be drained out on.
It will, and that limits the size of any structure that can go on that property. It'd be approximately a third of the whole property size, so that does eliminate that.
Mr. McCray, did you understand that? You didn't hear that, huh?
The, go ahead, John.
Any, any significant changes in development on that property would go to the Development Review Committee, which is made up of Public Works, St. John's Water Management District, the Fire Marshal, all those people. They look at virtually everything, including drainage. And drainage will be looked at by both press, pressespeople and the, and the Water Management District, so that they'll make sure that there's no more water being put into the road. Yeah, they'll probably have to have a retention bond. Yep, yeah. That's, that's what's going to happen.
I could tell that you had some idea about Blanding Boulevard. Most people don't realize it starts in Orange Springs and works its way north. So you're right. Okay. Is anybody else in the audience wishing to speak against this? All right, seeing now, we're going to close our public portion of our meeting, and Commissioner deliberations. Commissioners?
You've been picking on me all day.
I have not. You've been very vocal today.
Oh, Mr. Pickens.
Okay, let me, I'll look to my left.
I want to clarify something, though, if I can, with counsel.
Please do.
I stated ex parte communications, that I read my agenda wrong, and the person I spoke with has nothing to do with this. It's the next one.
Thank you for getting that on the record.
All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, what's your pleasure on item R17-005?
I'll go ahead and move that we go with staff recommendation.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard to accept staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it, and this is move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is still in Planning and Development, SD17002, Request Board Approval for Planning Commission, Development Review Committee to offer a resolution to approve the final plat for three-lot Bob's World subdivision. Item 151 to 165 in your packet. Mr. Brown, you have the floor, sir. I guess you're at the microphone.
Chairman and Commissioner Mike Brown, Putnam County Planning and Development Services. This is a proposed application for a type 1 subdivision of three lots, known as Bob's World, on 20.01 acres. The applicants are Will McCunningham and Nancy Jacobs. The parcel is located on State Road 100 in the San Mateo area. Future land use designation is Ag 2, and the zoning is agriculture. Here's a look at the future land use. It's all Ag 2 around there. Zoning district, as I pointed out, is Ag. Aerial, you'll see a wet area. It shows up pretty nicely on the aerial. And again, there, it is a wetlands. And here's a draft of the plat that's been submitted. Just a little background, this is, as I pointed out earlier, a three-lot subdivision, a type 1 subdivision on 20 acres. The property is a single lot resulting from a combination of two parcels, which were created as part of a type 2 subdivision back in 2016. That's the reason we're here today. As a requirement of the code, a condition on any type 2 subdivisions, any approvals, any further splitting or subdividing of any of the properties in a type 2 subdivision are automatically a type 1 subdivision. That's why we're here today. The comprehensive plan does allow residential uses in Ag 2, future land use, and, and the Land Development Code allows residential uses in the Ag zoning district. Each of the lots are 6.66 acres in size. The applicants had submitted, have submitted as part of their subdivision application, a family density exception. It's going to be all families, the three members, three part owners of the property are all related, so they're all in the same family, so they are, they can obtain a very, not a variance, but an allowance under the comp plan for a reduction in the density requirements. The proposed lot sizes do meet. The proposed lot sizes do meet the size requirements for the Ag zoning district. Lot one and two will be accessed via private unpaved 30-foot easement known as Midnight Lane. The Land Development Code, Section 11, 71106, does allow for recorded easements to be utilized as driveway access for up to two residents. This meets that requirement. An important aspect, I think, is that Midnight Lane and the associated drainage will be privately maintained and the county will not accept or be responsible for any ongoing maintenance or improvements to that easement. Again, a protection to the taxpayers of the county. They're, they don't, it's never going to be a burden on, on the county taxpayers. Staff findings, the request is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies found and adopted in the Putnam County Comp Plan. The request, requested subdivision is compatible with the surrounding zoning and uses. The request is consistent with the requirements of the Putnam Land Development Code. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend final plat approval. Staff recommends approval of the request for the preliminary and final plat approval for the three lot Bob's World subdivision. Any questions of staff?
Is this part of what we did a few years ago on the family subdivision?
No, no, this is different than that.
But it's close. I mean, it's very.
It's close. And it, it, well, it couldn't have met all those requirements of the family subdivision. But the reason this is in here is, is, or triggered the type one subdivision was because this acreage and another lot had gone through, the, the previous owner had gone through it, the large lot subdivision and created.
They did it once.
Actually, three 20 acre lots.
It's a good question. I thought the same thing.
Well, thank you.
The code requires if you subdivide a type two subdivision any further, you're automatically a type one subdivision.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Brown?
Just have one question. These are all family members, I guess, since it's a type one subdivision. If, if one of the parcels is sold to somebody who's not a family member, it doesn't have any repercussions on them, I guess, the new owner?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't.
If one of the pars, one of these parcels is sold later to somebody who's not a family member, what happens there? Is there any?
It, it, that's allowable. I mean, and, I mean, it's just what our comp plan and the Land Development Code allow. They can create it under a family subdivision, or a family density exception. It could be sold, but none of the family members or that parcel, if they sold it to a third one, can come back and claim a family subdivision, or a family density exception again, not in here or anyplace else in the county. That's our only somewhat protection, but it is a potential problem.
Okay. Are the applicants here? Would you like to come up and speak? Come on. We're not scary. We're not going to bite. There's only four of us, so.
We want to know what kind of cattle you're going to put on that.
And I want to know how Bob's World got, I didn't know we could have Larry's World. I'd have done something.
And how'd you name that lane Midnight Lane? What's that all about?
Yeah, we need, we got some questions here. We don't need to swear. This is not quasi judicial. So you, you don't, please state your name though and address for the record.
Do I, my present address or the, or, because I want to move there?
All right, let's not make this hard. Your present.
Nancy Jacobs, 471 San Mateo Road.
Good deal. Okay, Ms. Jacobs. So I guess you want to speak in favor of us. So go ahead. You have the floor.
It, it's just my mom and me and my other sister. So it's just us three, so.
Okay. And y'all think y'all can live on the same properties side by side without?
We, we've lived on the same property for 35 years.
So Commissioner Lible had a question of how did it become Midnight Lane? That was one of them.
What's that all about?
I don't know. When I put in for the 911 address, that's the way they, instead of, I thought it was going to be State Road 100. And they said that with three, it would have to go in, I don't know. It was something to do with the 911.
Well, it's certainly a good name to make some stories after.
Tonight, what, last night was full moon, so hey. It was gorgeous. How did it become Bob's World subdivision? I'd like to know that.
Well, because he said that we had to name it.
But it's your mother, you and your sister. There's no Bob.
It was my father. My father, it was a joke all the time. He always said, Bob's World.
How cute. I have to, I'm going to have to do that on my property. I wouldn't mind having my own little world there.
The mayor of San Mateo did call me, Mr. Tilton, I spoke of earlier.
Yeah.
You have his blessings.
Okay. Any other, any questions for Ms. Jacobs? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else would like to speak in favor of this? All right, anybody in opposition? All right. We're going to, any Commissioner comments? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible to move approval of SD17-002.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion of this board? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Y'all live peacefully together out there on the 6.66 acres of peace. Thank you very much for coming. See, we weren't that scary. I told you, we're not, we're, people are getting so upset. We're not. Mr. Hammond, you have the next item. Item number CA17-003.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Code Amendment 17-003, an ordinance of the County of Putnam, State of Florida, amending Article 7 of the Putnam County Land Development Code to mitigate development impact to roads, amending requirement for permits for work in or on county right of way, providing for enforcement procedure, amending the use of easements for access to property and providing for severability in an effective date. This is one of a series of code amendments we've been doing this fall, trying to just kind of clean up code and to clarify some issues, actually codify a few things we've been doing by policy. Specifically, this one is kind of where both planning and development and public works overlap. This is an issue for both of us. The first section on page 173 of your packet.
Say that again?
On page 173 of your packet. At the bottom of the page, what we're trying to do there is, it has been in the code for years, that a provision that basically allows us to ask for right of way when we need it as an exaction, if you will, for, in order to get or to approve a subdivision or those sorts of things. Specifically, we're trying to clarify that, make it more precise, that even in the case of a lot split, sometimes down on local roads. And right now, the code, it only goes for collectors and higher roads. But right now, we're trying to get down to local roads. Because more of the subdivision activity, lot splits that we get than anything else is on these local roads. And the local roads are the ones that causes Public Works a great deal of headache. Because either they don't have any right of way, or they have bits and pieces of right of way. And we need a mechanism to specifically get right of way along those kinds of roads when persons along those roads are asking us for approval of lot splits or subdivisions. You know, before we put more traffic and burden on those kinds of roads, if the county's going to ever have any hope of maintaining them, again, we have to have the right of way in order to maintain them.
Mr. Hammond, I have a question concerning that.
And I do have presses here also, and he'll be able to speak to some of these issues.
On that particular item, I know we've got some subdivisions coming before us. I assume Mr. Brown's working on that there are bits and pieces of right of ways. Your statement here says the department's not going to turn, turn anyone desiring a building permit on an existing lot on such a roadway. However, we must consider the impacts of adding additional development. So are you not going to turn anybody away, or are you going to say, wait a second?
In, in as a matter of fact, we may. You know, if, if the roadway is simply not there and doesn't have in capacity or is not up to a certain standard. Yes, we have in the past and we can deny a lot split, deny a subdivision, yes.
But if I am, if I'm trying to build a home on a lot and I give up my right of way, but everybody else in the neighborhood hasn't, or some people have and haven't, that could still affect my ability to build on my property. And we're seeing that happening.
That is an issue, but again, an issue we can get around. I think press can probably speak to that also. I don't think press wants, Public Works wants all these ends and pieces either ultimately. They want to either get it all or none of it.
And, and my last statement concerning this was that Mr. Tompkins is working, our Public Works manager is working with, trying to get some level of roads that we can live with, whether it be 66 feet of right of way or 33 feet or whatever the case may be. That would impact this statement also when he has.
Yes, it would.
Levels A through D, for example.
It would. Again, staff does not necessarily support that, but that is up to the board.
But reality is reality. The town of Antilacan is paving streets right now that are not 66 feet wide. They don't have the avenue to do that and they're perfectly fine to be able to do that. I think we just got to be realistic here, that in some cases, we're not going to get the right of way and we're not going to get the desired 66 feet.
Well, again, there's, you can only put so much in a five pound bag.
I got you.
And you got to have road, you got to have enough for two lanes and you have to have enough for drainage and you have to have enough right of way to accommodate all that.
Let me ask a question.
Please do.
Chair, you bring up good points, same ones I have. But this, what you're asking for here really is aimed at a, say, pre-land development code subdivision, where we ended up with pig trails, like you just said.
Right.
And the scenario he just painted, where you're going through and you've only got 15 feet, 20 feet, and then somebody decides to go the full 66, say. You know, it sounds, we still have the problem of what we just explained. But all this does is make sure on a new one that that doesn't happen again. Am I right there?
Please be advised. I mean, again, at currently, if somebody comes in for a lot split off a 15-foot easement, we're not going to give it to them. We haven't done that for years.
So you two departments are going to be at odds.
No. We communicate very well.
No, you said that you didn't support Mr. Tompkins' idea of having different levels of roads.
That's right.
So you are at odds at this moment.
Well, we'll have to have some discussion about that. But ultimately, it's his, his roads if he ends up with them.
Well, we're trying, as a board, we're trying to work through this right now because we're constantly bombarded with this. I mean, it's a great subject and I don't think this does much for it.
Press Tompkins, Public Works Director, what we're asking for is when somebody comes in for a lot split or doing anything, we would then analyze it on a case by case basis. In a certain extent, we only ask maybe 10 foot of right of way. Or other times, we may ask only five foot or 15 foot, whatever we need based on what, what the status of the road is and what we're trying to accomplish is what we'll ask for. It's not going to be a standard 33 feet, no matter what. We will look at these roads and like I said, it will be, and when they send it over to us at Public Works, we will analyze, say, yes, we need to request seven and a half feet of right of way, 10 foot of right of way, whatever that number may be, to facilitate the roadway that we will need to put in there. That's what we're trying, we get to the point that once the lot split's done, then I've got two or three other property owners to deal with, which later on, when we try to come back to get the right of way, we've got more property owners to deal with. We're trying to get a step ahead of this, that when we do a lot split, we can get the right of way then that we know we're going to need in the future to get the road done.
Okay. We, obviously, we like the flexibility that the Public Works Department, you, Mr. Tompkins, are bringing. But it does sound like Mr. Hammond's will ax it.
Well, we will have communication about it, but there, there are requests that we stop because they have insufficient access.
I'm not sure we're getting anywhere.
Yeah, I agree. Well, if I might jump in, this isn't, this isn't a fix-all for all of those issues. What's being proposed today really just is, being proposed by staff to address those issues when the lot split is creating a problem. And, and the amount of right of way that, that they can request has to be rationally related to the impact that that lot split is going to have. And that's it. So they're not going to be able to, according to this change, if you all approve it, you know, say, oh, because you're, you're splitting your lot into two, we need, we need 66 foot of right of way, when the impact is not nearly that significant. There would be a problem with that, so. But I don't, I don't think this is designed to address some of those other concerns that you have. And we're going to have a workshop to address some of those additional concerns. There are vesting opportunities for some, some of those existing paper plat subdivisions that are, that have been built with insufficient infrastructure. And there's a procedure to go through to get vesting determination to be able to build on, on those lots. But those are case by case analysis.
Okay. If you don't mind, Chair, it does, this change or proposal does keep a lot of this out of your office.
Well.
But we still have holes in it. And I know we've discussed it in workshops, but, you know, I just, for some reason, it just surfaced that you two are not, I mean, you could potentially be at odds. I heard that clear out of you, but Mr. Hammond has a different face.
We have worked very well together.
I'll make sure that, that staff is, we're, we're in the same room and, and all going in the same direction.
I know we can't clean it up with a sweeping lawn, but, and, and it is good work. But still, I, I could see the same issues being challenges to us, but.
I think we need to see what the level of roads are prior to doing this. Because I think that's where the rub is right now. If it's, if you're going to allow road D, for example, whatever D is, thinking that A would be the best road and D might be substandard. And you, Mr. Hammond, you might go, that can't fit here because of that. I mean, that's where I think we're going to have to see those level of roads that the board has talked to you about putting together and having that done.
In general, most of what's in Article 7 of the LDC is enforced or reviewed by Public Works. We typically don't do that. With the exception of how it relates to lot splits and plats and that sort of thing. But again, those are largely subject to Public Works review.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Hammond on that? All right, you may continue, Mr. Hammond. You're at page 173.
On the top of page 174, the second issue here that we're dealing with is, again, something that Public Works has already had a problem with about oversized, transportation of oversized loads through the county and persons having problems and actually doing damage to our right of ways. This is something that Public Works proposed, is essentially a right of way permit where they have to get in touch with Public Works first before transporting such load and get some help on directions, route, that sort of thing, for certain things, so they don't damage our right of way. And remember, all that stuff's county property and is maintained at public expense.
When, when I read this, I looked at 80 feet of gross weight. You're going to tell me that Veritas Seal would need to contact our Public Works and say, I'm going to be driving down County Road 315 or 218, or what, just name whatever road, 309C, and say, I need permission to be able to draw, bring my product out of there. there," because that's how this is reading to me. Yes, it will. They'll have to contact our Public Works, because here's where, here's where the rub came. Go ahead, Ms. Tompkins, then I'll let you, then I'll-
Go ahead and answer your question and I can answer it all.
Well, I did. Veritas Steel, well, they have to contact you, Public Works, in order to take their product out of their, their shipyard if they use the county road.
And they're a whole different load. And they, and they contact DOT also. They're oversized loads and they have to, what they show is they have enough axles on their transport trucks that they don't overweight, go overweight on the per-axle load. We're asking for the same thing if they're going down a county road, because those overweight loads do more damage to the road than thousands of cars going down the same road. All we're asking is that they notify us so we know what's going on. If we've got utilities, if we've got anything in the way of it, we know their route, and that's what we're asking for. We're not asking for anything more than what DOT requires today for Veritas to move those big steel girders down the road. You notice they're, they have extra trailers, extra axles they put on there. And our, some of our county roads are not to DOT standards. I mean, if, if they've got, let's say, for instance, they've got some of these big, I know what they've got coming for the big transformers that are going out on Price Road. I mean, the DOT road may be able to stand it. They'll have to get an oversized permit from them. I'm just asking that show us the same courtesy and let me know if, if the structure even go down Price Road. It may be too narrow. We, the word this came about was, we had a mobile home dealer that went down Coral Farms Road. Well, he couldn't make it, so he took out his chainsaw and started cutting down the canopy. And we said, "Whoa, you can't do that. If you would've contacted us ahead of time, we would've told you a better route than what GPS told you. You could've gone another route on a more open road to get to Bellamy Road where he was going to deliver the mobile home rather than trying to cut the canopy down on Coral Farms Road."
Okay. And I was going to go there, but, and I'm not trying to be combative. I just want to make sure we don't have a tree ordinance in this county. So this all derived from him cutting the canopy up a little bit in order to get that mobile home down there, I think it's far-reaching, in my opinion.
Well, we don't think, because we keep the canopy trimmed at the DOT standard, which is fourteen feet. He was trimming above that. And as you know, our residents are very protective of these roads with the tree canopies, and we are very protective of it. We are very conscious about trying to maintain the proper canopy and not overcut, not overtrim these trees. And, you know, this is, it's just one instance, but if we can talk to these people ahead of time and tell them a better route to go, because I hate to say it, everybody looks, all they do is look at the dag gum GPS and that's the way it tells them to go. They may be going down a, a timber road for all they know. So it's just a mechanism to help us protect our rights of way and protect our roadways. I mean, I don't want anybody, you know, putting eighty thousand pounds on a two-axle truck and trying to go down a county road and then I've got ruts in it and then later on, we've got to fix it. So we're not asking anything more than what DOT requires them to do today.
Commissioner Laube?
Mr. Tompkins, my concern are kind of on the same line with Larry's, but an entity like Veritas Steel or any of our corporate partners that, that do this on a regular basis, in the past, they have to be permitted by DOT and now we're asking them to check in with the county, too. Is that the case on these?
That's all we're doing, is to ask them just to give us the same courtesy of where they're going. If it doesn't affect county roads, we don't have to be involved in it at all. If they're going down state roads, that's fine.
So what triggers them to call us? How would we know that Veritas is bringing out a bridge structure on a Friday morning?
Well, we can, we can either coordinate with DOT and we can coordinate with them. I mean, I'd be glad to go out and meet with them, say, "When you have a load, just, it's, it's a two-page permit, you can fill out online, just tell us where you're going."
Okay. I guess what I, my request, I mean, I can support this, but I don't want to be a burden to people that are following the rules really well.
We will reach out to them and we will make the coordination easy for them. We're not trying to put any undue burden on them, any excess paperwork on them.
There seems to be an intended target here and that's fine, but if we, I don't want the collateral damage from your intentions to give us a, a bad reputation in the working environment of these bigger corporations.
And I agree with that, and that is not our intention whatsoever.
Well, make it as simple as possible is all I ask. Thank you.
And along those lines, when we talk about Price Road, you know, FPNL, we've met with them prior to them building out there, you kind of knew what was coming. They paved the road.
Oh, I know they did.
I mean, they, they're the ones that paved it.
Yeah.
So now they say, "Well, you know, you might want to give us a call before we use our county road."
Well, no, what we were talking to them about is the size of these transformers they're bringing in are huge.
I'm sure they are.
They have to bring them in by barge, they can't even bring them in by rail. And, you know, what we, and we've actually done, worked with FPNL out there and we've done some tree trimming on Price Road to bring in some of their other equipment, but they've worked with us. They call us, "Hey, we've got this coming in. What can we do? Where can we go? How can we make it work?" And we've worked very well with FPNL. They've been an extremely good partner and it's worked everybody's benefit.
Well, and what I'm reading here, the mobile home dealer did nothing wrong about cutting the tree canopy, because we don't have an ordinance about tree canopy. We don't have a tree ordinance in this county.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to correct you on that. Although we don't have a tree ordinance, we're talking about trees that are county-owned property, property owned by the taxpayers of the county that we're obligated to protect.
All right.
So it's, it's irrelevant if we have an ordinance. It is county property and the county right-of-way trees and we're obligated to protect those as well as the roadways.
Right. Thank you. I stand corrected then.
Yes, Mr. Goddard.
But with the mobile home, were you aware that they were taking the mobile home down that way?
No, we were not.
And how would you in the future know that they were going any direction whatsoever?
What we, Brian and I have talked about this, we're going to draft a letter up to all the mobile home dealers in this area in South Georgia and say, you know, "When you come into Putnam County, you will be required to let us know the route."
Were you aware that they were taking the mobile home down that way?
No, we were not.
And how would you in the future know that they were going any direction whatsoever?
What we, Brian and I have talked about this, we're going to draft a letter up to all the mobile home dealers in this area in South Georgia and say, you know, "When you come into Putnam County, you will be required to let us know the route you're taking and where you're going so we can analyze it, make sure that you're not..." I mean, mobile homes have their own ordinance. We're not, a standard mobile home is not overweight or oversized. I'm talking about the oversized loads, the ones that are too hot, too, too tall. I mean, I think, Stacy, I'm correct, I think it's fourteen-foot or thirteen and a half is the DOT standard for the height of a load. All we're asking for is notify us of where you're going. Like I said, Coral Farms Road, we could've corrected that in two minutes if somebody would've notified us. We said, "No, you need to go this way, this way, this way. You'll be there a lot quicker, a lot safer, a lot easier." So we, we've already talked, Brian and I talked about this at length, trying to notify all the mobile home dealers in the Northeast Florida area in South Georgia and say, "Hey, if you come into Putnam County, please let us know so we can at least advise you the route you need to take."
Okay. Thanks.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Press, do you think this will affect the trust plant in South Putnam in any way?
It shouldn't, because most of them don't do an oversized load or overweight load. They, they have to go through weight stations, too. I've looked at all the trust trucks around and most of them are running legal. And they, they know the DOT requirement. I mean, they're going to be right under it because they don't want to go get special permit from DOT either.
When they get a permit from DOT, why, why, why aren't your department notified?
I'm going to work with DOT to make sure that we are notified when they issue those permits also.
Can we, you did Mr. Pick again. Can we include, I don't want to put any more burden on our Sheriff's Department, but could they be in the loop so that if an unsafe situation were to present itself and one of Gator's deputies, Sheriff Deloche, I'm sorry, were already there, you know, they would have some paperwork from the county that, that, you know, Saturday after move, Saturday afternoon movers are who you're after and I know it, so. All right. So, I mean, without that arm, I don't see how you can get this done without creating new positions. So I'm not asking to put another load on you, Sheriff, but-
No, it's, it's no imposition at all, and I think I can probably speak to this and help maybe streamline this process a little bit. We frequently are contacted by entities that are moving large oversized loads through the county because they require additional assistance from law enforcement. And it's very easy for us to pick up the phone and notify Mr. Tompkins over at Public Works that this is going on and review that permit with him at the time to see if there are any county roads that are affected and what we need to do to mitigate that.
Okay. That's good enough. If somebody were on watch on the weekends, you know, had phone, you know, one of your staff press, the, when the deputy made the call, it would go to that person and they'd say, "Yeah, this person's vetted with us," or they're not.
We, we have people on call all the time. The Sheriff's Department has our own call numbers, so we have everybody, we have somebody available twenty-four-seven, so, and my supervisors, area supervisor will be versed in this and they will have the proper paperwork with them if they get called out.
Okay. Good enough. All right, Mr. Hammond, you want to continue? Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins.
Yes, sir. At the bottom of page one seventy-four of your packet then, and these are just kind of small cleanup and making absolutely clear on seven-eleven-oh-three-A that repairing a culvert or a driveway connection does require a county permit. And again, when we talk about the driveway connection, we're talking primarily about the culvert, but it is more than the culvert. It's also what goes over the culvert and actually connects to our surface, et cetera. Secondly, on page one seventy-five, number six at the top of the page that's added, just again, clarifying there that any work in a county right-of-way requires a permit. Then at the bottom of that page, one seventy-five of your packet E, this is just putting down in writing a procedure that we have been using in the county for four, five years for when people either let their driveway connection fail, it's usually the culvert, of course, or put it in unauthorized. We give them proper notice and says, "Pull the permit and fix it," or if you don't fix it within so many days, we're going to, Public Works is going to rip it out. And you'll still be required to give a permit and fix it if you want the thing back. The driveway connection, again, if, if it's in the county right-of-way, it's still on county property. It serves a piece of private property, but is still in the county's right-of-way. That's why we have to control those things. If they fail, of course, you get erosion, improper drainage, and these are things you all receive complaints about on a routine basis.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
On page one seventy-five, item B, the exemption from permit, explain that one to me a little bit, because I have concern about that one. So we're going to exempt the state of Florida.
No.
Page one seventy-five, item B.
That's something that's been in code, that's in code, it's been in code. Let's see, connection two.
So give me an example of how that would work.
And again, I'll have to defer to press on that. That's an issue that's been in code, but where county right-of-ways intersect is what these are.
Commissioner, what we said was that anything in a state right-of-way, we have no jurisdiction over. And what we're saying, that is exempt from our permitting process.
Okay.
We don't, we have applications come in erroneously saying they want a permit on State Route 20, and we say that is strictly up to the State Highway Department to issue that permit, it's not under county jurisdiction.
That, I was, thank you.
That's what we were just trying to clarify, that.
That explained that. Okay. Commissioners, any other que, Mr. Hammond, are you pretty much done with your?
The last thing, again, is a clarification on page one seventy-six of your packet at the top of the page is just a clarification of something, again, we've been doing by policy for the last decade. Specifically, whenever somebody does create a lot, usually through a lot split, they typically, or they frequently create access to that lot by an easement. And our code allows up to two residential units to be served by an easement that's no more than thirty feet wide. Okay. So they're, they're commonly done, but what we don't want, and what we've never allowed to happen, is we don't allow the, the easement just to end right at the property line.
Right.
It needs proper road frontage and proper turnaround radius, so we ask them to basically have a turning radius to that driveway that's in the property and that meets the letter and the intent of the code beyond that. And that sums that up.
So you want to create a little cul-de-sac area?
Essentially.
Right. For turnaround.
It's part of the easement.
Right.
It's created.
Well, thank you. I think we vetted that pretty, pretty well. And Ms. Tompkins, thank you for your participation in that. Any more Commissioner comments? All right. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on CA seventeen-zero-zero-three for the first reading?
Just Chairman, a public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have anybody in the, I'm sorry, have any, anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor of this? I'm sorry, Ms. Weeks, I-
That's okay.
-completely flew over it.
Rock Santa Reagan Weeks, Black, Florida. I have a question that came up last year and the year prior. In the right-of-way that will be due to the county, who's going to bear the cost of installing the culverts? Because it came up as a question before on some issues, the county's justification was, "These culverts are in our right-of-way, we have a legal right to do this." So if a property owner is willing to sign over this easement and the rights, will the county and the taxpayers bear the cost of putting in the culverts in the driveway for the land owner from now on?
I'll let Mr. Tompkins answer that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks.
The driveway culverts are sole expense of the property owner. They're, they're the pleasure of the property owner. It doesn't, as long as it doesn't interfere with our drainage, the dedication of the right-of-way is so we can actually construct a road in there with the proper drainage, so when the driveway culvert's put in, it will work properly.
Mr. Tompkins, can you give us a what-if scenario? What, what if it, why would the county replace a culvert at our expense? Let me ask you that.
If we're doing an overall drainage project on Joe Smith Road-
Okay.
-and we're redoing complete drainage along that road and there's some substandard driveway culverts, we will fix them because we're fixing an overall drainage project. We're not fixing one driveway culvert for one resident. I'm fixing a drainage system. We're, we're installing catch basins, we're installing other types of drainage structures to make the overall drainage of a whole area work. That's the only time that we would replace a driveway culvert in conjunction with an overall drainage project. We will not replace just an individual driveway culvert because it failed. That is solely of the property owner to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. Anybody else want to speak in favor of CA seventeen-dash-zero-zero-three? All right, anybody opposed to CA seventeen-dash-zero-zero-three? We're going to end our public hearing, seeing no one else, and do we need a motion on this since it's the first reading or it can just stand on its own?
Brian, do you, I don't think you typically get a motion, do you?
Yeah, I think it just stands on-
Just to move it on to-
On our first reading, it stands on its own.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll come, it'll come back.
All right, good. Thank you. Then we, the board will take no action on that and let it stand on its own merit. Commissioners, with item number twelve, appointments, board members, do we have any appointments?
I have.
You have? Okay.
On the planning commission, I'd like to appoint Mary Kay Engelking to replace Frank Engle.
Okay.
I've got to comment on that if I could.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Worked with Commissioner Goddard, and I see your appointment is here. In the past, sometimes on our boards, we try to integrate different-
In the past, sometimes on our boards, we try to integrate different professions, and in this case, what concerns me is we have a real estate broker, a real estate agent, and now we're adding another real estate agent. It could potentially have some problems, it could be problematic. So, I mean, what I was asking, if your appointee could, if she would serve on another board or whatever, I don't know, but I'm gonna ask because I've seen this with my experience.
I wouldn't.
In the past, you could see you have to recuse yourself with, you know, zoning issues and this sort of thing, and it's something that we do on the contractors' board, we do on all of them, and anyhow, that's what brings my concern.
Uh, if I could have Mary come up?
Well, I think that needs to be answered. Maybe our attorney needs to weigh in.
Yes.
You know, it's, that's a valid concern. We do have two real estate professionals on that board. Having a third one, it does increase the, the chances that there are conflicts and that individuals have to refrain from, from taking action because of the nature of that board and, and what they're doing, so that.
We had an example of it today, by the way, one of the earlier.
And it does come up. I do represent that Planning Commission, and it does come up typically, most often it does involve a real estate professional because of some involvement in, in what's being proposed.
Well, Commissioner Lavelle brings up a good point. I'm gonna make an appointment too, and, and I did not run this by you, but thank you, Mr. Lavelle, for saying what you said. I have a gentleman that does not work in this county, but he works in the building profession business in Clay County. He lives here in Putnam. He's a inspector for the building department up there, and I wanted to point him to the Planning Commission. Do you think that would cause an issue also? I mean, maybe we need to start looking at some of the criteria that we're.
Well, I think that's a little different situation if he's not.
He's not a real estate agent, but he, he's.
I mean, he would if he had some involvement in a property that was being proposed for, for some change. That was before the Planning Commission, you know, if he was doing construction work or, you know, his construction contract was contingent on that happening, that would be a situation where that, that person would need to recuse themselves from the vote or discussion on the matter.
She does.
Well, maybe we need to look at that and set some criteria in the future on the Planning Commission of how many and who and what and all that.
Support.
You know.
We could certainly look at that.
Yeah, we might want to do that. Okay. But in the meantime, we have, Commissioner Goddard has made an appointment, Mary Kay Engelking, and I will offer a chat bar. Mr. Goddard, do you have a comment?
Well, I'd, to get back to on Mary Kay for this one, I, I would like to go further and to find out if there could be a conflict. Can we still put her on here and then address that later, or?
Well, the, the conflicts is case by case, as things come up before the Planning Commission. And they have to make a determination, a personal determination, whether they have a conflict in that particular matter.
And, you know, I've, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Goddard.
Well, I, I, I would still like to appoint her for this. And then, also, if I'm not speaking out of line, the Affordable Housing Committee, which is the SHIP program, that was something you were also interested in. And so, I was going to appoint her also for that one, and from what I understand, there will not be a conflict.
Uh, that one could very well be. I would ask you to not do that one now until I looked into it, because our Planning Commission does have certain statutory obligations, and our SHIP folks may also have certain duties which would cause a violation of the dual office holding standards. So, I would ask to hold off on that one.
We'll, we'll hold off on that one, and we'll go ahead with the Planning Commission.
Or vice versa. I mean, one or the other. But I would ask not both until I could look into it further.
Yeah, I think I want to go, let's continue with the Planning Commission appointment.
Okay. So, right now, the two appointments that are in front of the board is Chet Bar to replace Tom Williams and Mary Kay Engelking to replace Frank Engman. Is there any other appointments by any other commissioners? All right.
Chuck, excuse me, just a second, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Chuck Bar and Chet, and Tom Williams' spot?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. The chair will entertain the motion of these appointments.
Also move.
Okay, we have proper motion by Commissioner Pickens.
You taking them together?
Yeah, we'll do them together. Looking for a second?
Well, then I can second it.
I don't like them together.
Commissioner Goddard, second it? All right. Any further discussion by this board? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Nay.
Okay. Three to one, thank you. Okay, no other appointments, let's move on to our county administrator slash interim county administrator.
Stacy Manning.
Uh, thank you. Couple of things, is Angie still here? If I could get, Ms. Wisnet would like to just give a, I'd like to ask her to come up and just give a quick update on the, on the pool lifeguard situation that had recently been brought to the board's attention.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As we discussed quite lengthy yesterday at the Rec Advisory Board meeting, the closure this year is merely due to the fact that our applicants, our staff, if you will, have to be American Red Cross certified or another form of certification. Those individuals, each and every year, you know, we are not unique in this situation, come from high school students and college students. Both of those individuals, those groups, go back to school in August. So, we have a open position, we have a continuous open position to the Human Resources Department for lifeguards. We have reached out to many entities. We are continuing to reach out, and we will welcome anyone who wants to come forward to perform those duties for the final 40 hours of the season. This is not a funding issue, this is a staffing.
Right. What we learned yesterday is we have the finances to hire them, we just have kids that are in school and can't be out there to the pool till 3:00.
That is correct.
And some residents want to use it earlier in the day, and we just don't. But we did reach out. We had some of our members yesterday reach out to people who they thought were certified. I think you were gonna reach out to Chief Romey to see if any of his first responders had American Red Cross training in the pool, and try to keep that pool open for that organization to be able to use that.
That is correct, yes, sir.
At that time. Yes. Commissioner Lavelle?
How long is that course? The lifeguard course?
It's a 40-hour course.
Okay.
Does it have to be a current certification?
Yes. I mean, you become certified and then you recertify every year. Because some of the cases can change.
Do you want to volunteer and go? Oh, okay.
She was certified in 1976. Go on.
Exactly.
I figured.
Standards change from year to year. CPR would be a good example of that.
So does our bodies, and we don't swim near as fast as we used to.
Yes.
I learned that the other day when I jumped off in the lake thinking I was 20 again. Doesn't work that way, does it?
Anything else I can answer for you?
No, I think you did a very good job, and we're just, we'll put it out there that we're looking for people who want to be Red Cross certified.
Staff has been very transparent in this effort. You know, we, we put this information out to our pool patrons about five weeks prior to this happening, so we're, we're operating in the light.
And you also put it out to that group that came up to before us, and, and they were looking for people that could help that group also.
Absolutely.
So, yes, I think you've done a great job on that.
I have a request.
Yes, sir.
If I could. What if we did a little bit of PSA here, a public service announcement, wanting this position filled? Because it's rather controversial, you pick up the paper, and there's been multiple letters to the editor that kind of, they don't shed positive light on our organization as far as this issue goes, but it's not as bad as what we're reading. I mean, what if we went out and actually did an ad saying, "Hey, looking for all lifeguards that are currently?"
We could certainly put something in the paper.
That's what I'm asking.
Advertising for the position, we don't normally do that.
I would like to get proactive on this because it's.
I agree.
We can do that.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, what do you think?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I always thought we needed to have our own page on the, in our local papers anyway, that we could put little snippets in there.
Maybe we start right here?
Maybe so.
I'm, I'm in agreeance with you.
Be happy to.
Okay.
Anything else?
That does it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we've got a couple more, and thank you, Ms. Wisnet. Just to correct the, the record from earlier, today, Mr. Browning, we're thanking for the, all the hard work he did in getting us, getting us some appropriations. The appropriation for Dog Branch Canal was stated that that was for them all to complete the project. It's not quite, so I just want to get that on the record. There's some, about almost $400,000 over and above to be completed, to complete that project. So, just to get that on the record. Then, the other thing I wanted to do, and this, I guess, in and of itself is somewhat of a public service announcement, I wanted to just read to you some key activities that our Public Works, Public Works Department performed in the month of June of 2017, because a lot of folks don't really know how much work they actually do. Approximately 221 miles of unpaved roads were graded by in-house forces in that one month alone. 580 service requests were received that month. Clerical staff answered approximately 1,225 phone calls during the month for service, general inquiries, et cetera. The department provided an inmate crew to Parks and Recreation from June 5th through the 8th, and this one's important. In-house mowing completed 269 shoulder miles this month out of 874 shoulder miles this cycle. In addition, 6,408 feet of roadside and outfall ditches were cleaned this month. So, just wanted to kind of let you all know that they're working hard, they are out there, they're doing, they're doing the best that they can considering, you know, the limited staff and, and Mother Nature's somewhat uncooperative distemper this time of year. And that's all I have.
Press, this might be the time for me to say that last week, there was a dump truck and a grader that did take their GPS and went the wrong way, and they had to go back around to Second Street over there, or, yeah, yeah, I think it was Center Street over there by the cemetery. So, just to let you know, they were lost by GPS. So, thank you, Mr. Manning, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, now is your turn for county attorney. Dual hats here.
Uh, nothing out of the ordinary of a legal nature at the moment.
Okay. All right. Clerk of the Court, Mr. Tim Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if you're gonna talk about getting lost using your GPS, then I'm guilty of it all around. I've been some places before, said, "Why did it take me down here?" So, anyway, but I did want to take just a second and remind folks of our new customer care service center. It's working well, we're getting a lot of good comments about it. It's our effort to provide service without having to go through the security matrix at the courthouse. It basically is any activity that you need the clerk of court for currently. We do that in Building E., not in the main courthouse. However, if you are going to the courthouse where you're gonna basically stand in front of a judge or a magistrate, you still need to go to the courthouse. So, that kind of separates those. Anything else, paying traffic tickets, Putnam County retirees paying insurance payments, doing inquiry on a case, filing into a case, needing forms, you go to Building E. to the Customer Care Service Center. And as I mentioned earlier, it's working very well, and thank you for allowing me to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That is gonna be a very positive note. And I like your jacket, by the way, very, very nice jacket.
Well, our staff has been required to, required to wear these in court events for the past 16 years that I've been the clerk, and I finally got one. I thought, well, maybe I should wear it.
All right, good deal. Commissioner comments, starting to my left this time, since Commissioner Lavelle said I was picking on him earlier.
I'll just take this opportunity to thank Press Tompkins and his staff, because it does make your job as a county commissioner a lot easier when you get a complaint about a road issue or ditch issue, and, and you can contact his department and they take care of it as fast as they can. Just would like to mention, last Thursday evening, I hosted a reception at the government complex in Crescent City. We actually kicked off the, the available use of the space where supervisors' elections do their polling periodically during the year. And I just want to thank from the Clerk of Court's office, Tim Smith and Kenny Downs, Supervisor Elections, Charles Overturf and Task Collector, Linda Myers, for getting together, where that, and getting together and agreeing that that space can be used by the public, and we already have people signing up for it to hold their meetings or functions there. So, I just want to thank you, and it's gonna be a, a needed addition for Crescent City. We really don't have a, a space that is free of charge to the public for meetings and such like that, so thank you very much.
You. All right, Commissioner Lavelle?
Um, last weekend, the first Saturday of every month, Pomona Park Community Center has a breakfast, and I hate to admit it's my first visit, it won't be my last. And Boss Week better watch out, the blueberry pancakes were to kill for. They got a, they could have a competition, but that was really good, and I enjoyed it, and I just wanted to shout out to them how well it is and to keep it going. The farm share, I want to reiterate that, Leota shared with us from Representative Payne's office this morning. This Saturday ought to be a great event, and if anybody can show up out of our ranks, we need to do so. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Goddard?
Now, you covered two very good things there, and you forgot to say that the mayor makes the French toast.
Oh, incredible. I'll have to try that next time.
But I want to say thank you to Public Works. As everybody knows, we've had all the rain and all the problems we've had, and I've had countless problems out there on, in my little area, and, and Public Works has been right on top of it, taking care of it, keeping some of those phone calls from being repeat phone calls. So, thank you.
And I agree, I tell you, I don't know how y'all do it over there in the heat and the humidity, and I'm sure it's not a pleasant job over there, and the constant bombardment from us commissioners, but our phones were ringing off the hook. I'm glad you changed the website, so my name, for some reason, with a driveway permit, I don't know how that happened. I was wondering, I kept saying, "Why am I getting all these phone calls?" And then I happened to look one night, and there it was. So, I think it was an IT joke on my part or something. I do want to say thank you, we, Mr. Manning and I went to the White House and flew up to Washington and met with USDA, spent the whole day at the Eisenhower complex. About 20 different agency heads were there who have opened their doors, we were able to ask questions, we were able to get answers. It was quite busy, and we had a really, really great time representing Putnam County and promoting our needs before the administration up there. They seem to really want to be receptive, they seem to really want to be helpful, and we found that to be very true, and we have contacts, and I think you've got copies of the emails on that. So, then we met with Congressman Yoho the next morning for breakfast. He had some, some pretty good ideas of things that he wants to do here for Putnam County. So, I'm gonna just say this, we need to hang on. We need to hang on because good things are coming, and it's based on a lot of hard work from a lot of good people who are really wanting to raise this bar here and make Putnam County good. And if we can hang on and, and have an investment in Putnam County, then we're gonna see great things in the future. Do you want to thank Mr. Manning, because I did drag him around? I think he dragged me around some of the streets, but, you know, when you think about walking in DC, and it's only, it's only a mile and a half, we can do that easily. Ooh, man, wasn't so easy at that point.
No, we, we made that decision that the first night, we decided we were gonna walk back from basically the Capitol to the White House, that distance.
Right.
And it was 1.7 miles. Ah, that's no big deal. Wrong. When you're wearing a suit and a tie and it's, you know, 80-some degrees, it's probably not the best idea. And we decided that night we were not gonna do that again, but yet the very next day, it was, "Well, this is only 1.7 miles, we'll go ahead and just walk that." Wrong, again, no, those were bad decisions.
So, they have a pretty neat thing called Lyft up there, where Mr. Manning was very efficient, where you get in touch with somebody and this red car stops and Humberto picks you up and takes you where you're going for a fee pre-arranged, and it was a pretty neat situation, so that's how we maneuvered around Washington, DC. I do want to say, I got this little card here, I'm gonna be giving it to. I'm going to be giving it to somebody. It was brought to me from a friend of mine that came from Georgia the other day, and it's a Citizen Litter Patrol card. And you can fill it out and mail it into this company, this government entity about if you see littering taking place. And I thought, that would be a really good idea for Putnam County if we had littering problems. You know, if you saw it, we could put it out there. So I'll be bringing that up later on, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you all for a great meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry.
Because of your conversation, could I make a couple more comments?
Please do.
About Washington and Representative Yoho. I know that he's indicated in the past that one of his desires is to assist us with the internet deserts that we have in our community, and we meet once a month with Bob Stender, and we've been discussing for, it's been a number of years of how to get better internet connection to Crescent City. We have a need in our office because we are a full-service center there for our customers, and so is Linda Myers. And we really struggle with being able to do a comparable job there as we do here. Now, it's not the same in Inilock, and we have much better internet connection. But in talking to him, I know that you were going to have further conversations later this month about the next year's budget and still looking at ways to reduce that, and I understand that. But I want to stress the importance of IT to all of our efforts anymore because we are so tied to technology that we, every day, there's a new requirement that's either given to us or mandated to us, that we have to do something that requires some technology and particularly access to the internet, both going and coming to our office. And I don't want to miss an opportunity to speak to the need that we have of IT. And when Bob was elevated to his job, his job was not filled, and I understand that. He was a group administrator prior to being the director of IT. So I hope that when you have those discussions in the upcoming month about next year's budget, that you'll keep in mind that it's really important to us to be able to do that. And as you develop your priorities for the upcoming legislative delegation meeting, that I hope that those internet desert issues continue to be somewhere in our packet to those folks, so that when an opportunity comes up and our representatives are out, they could, it would be a reminder to them that we still have those issues in our community. And it's not just for people to go on Facebook, but it really is a driver of enterprise. And when those areas don't have them, it limits ability for people to be entrepreneurs, whether they're involuntary or not. But it's like, you know, when folks in the United States didn't have access to electricity, and, you know, the federal government finally said, everybody's going to have access to electricity, and those that provide electricity are going to have to, in their business model, know that there are areas that aren't going to be profitable, but the larger areas are going to be, and you got to weigh all that in that process. So I know that we maybe don't have as much leverage as we used to with utilities, with franchise obligations and right-of-ways that we provide them to use right-of-ways. But wherever those opportunities are, we should be pushing those providers that provide internet service in our county, that you have to get into those areas. There's no if, ands, or buts about it. Don't come to us and ask us to allow you to be in the profitable areas if you're not also going to serve the less profitable areas. So I hope that we keep those conversations as we move forward over the next few months with our representatives. So thank you for allowing me to take that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And that was very well noted up in Washington also, that, you know, it wasn't just our county. It's a lot of counties in Florida that have no service in some areas. So we do, I agree. All right, is there anything else? All right, hearing no other business, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.